All right, ladies and gentlemen, six o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. I guess our first order of business would be to approve the minutes from the last meeting in September.
Roll call first.
Oh, we have a roll call, I beg your pardon. I'm gonna get this straight, y'all, I'm kinda learning some of this. Mr. Kitchen back here used to help us do all this, but he's moved on to better things. Present. All right, I guess now our first order of business, as we call the roll, will be to approve the minutes from the September meeting. We didn't have one in October, there was nothing on the docket.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for the September meeting as written.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, so that's all approved. We've got three things on the docket for you guys tonight. The first one that we've actually got here in front of us is, I believe, is Mr. and Ms. McGraw, if I'm saying their last name right. McGrew, I beg your pardon, trying to read, trying to read a writing here. Basically, what they're wanting to do, from my understanding is, is they're over on West Hammond Street, and they would like to have a little daycare in the neighborhood for up to six people. And you guys are here, would you like to come up front and tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
Good evening. My name is Jasmine McGrew. My background history, I have been born and raised here in Alabama, and graduated from Robertsdale High School. I would like to request approval for small in-home daycare, it's gonna be up to six children from ages six weeks to preschool age. I would just like to let you guys know that I'm going to complete all the safety trainings and maintain proper caregiver-child ratios, ensure my home is safe, it meets the fire, sanitation, and emergency preparedness standards. I want to assure you guys that about neighborhood impact, my daycare will operate during normal business hours, Monday to Friday, between the hours of 7:30 to AM to 5:30 PM. I have adequate space in my driveway and my front yard for parking, so traffic flow on the, on our street will not be disrupted. The noise levels remain low and consistent with a typical family home. Outdoor play will be scheduled in short intervals and always supervised, and I am committed to maintaining a peaceful and respectful environment for my neighbors. And I would like to thank you guys for your time and consideration. I'm committed to operating my daycare responsibly, safely, and in full compliance with all local and state regulations. I respectfully request your approval for this application, and I'm happy to answer any more questions that you guys may have.
So you have made applications with DHR or whoever, the state of Alabama?
I have not started the DHR process yet because I need to have approval from zoning before I can even send anything. But I have had my fire inspection already done, and I have my emergency preparedness plans made and everything like that.
So if this, this were to get approved, what would be your timeframe as far as trying to get the business started?
Probably the beginning of next year, beginning of 2026.
Yeah, I was gonna bring out, we did have a, we did have a letter of someone who does not want this on your street, so we have to take that into consideration.
Do you have any questions for? Is there anyone else here that would have wanted to come up here and tell us their thoughts on this at all? And sir, when you come up front, if you'll introduce yourself, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Lance Alexander, I'm the one that wrote the letter. So let me start off by saying, I am not opposed to daycare, I don't think there are enough daycares in a good community like this, but I am not in agreement with the daycare on, in a residential R2-zoned area. And I'll, I'll give you some reasons why that I feel that way. First of all, let me explain a little bit about my background. Back in the mid-2000s, for about three years or so, I sat on the County Board of Adjustments. So I've sat in the same type of seat that you're in right now. We met over here at the Annex Building, right over here. Heard a lot of cases where folks would come and make an application for an adjustment or an exception to an existing zoning law. And the rules that govern zoning are very, very specific. In fact, there were, a lot of times there was an attorney present because we would have questions about the legality of precedents, and what actually could be done to provide an exception or a variance to an existing zoning. And so, one of the things that I'd like you to consider is, is that if you, if you do consider providing the exception, you would be providing an exception to a business that's not even yet licensed, the business does not even exist, and I'm not sure that you can even provide an exception for an entity that doesn't, doesn't exist and may not exist, ending state approval for a licensing for a daycare center. And those requirements are very, very strict. I don't know if you've looked at the requirement to have a daycare center, but they are significant because of the nature of the business. Two, she made reference to the traffic flow. And there's not a map in here that shows you what Hammond Street looks like, but if you're familiar with it, it's right back over here. It's a one-way street, I'm sorry, it's a dead-end street, there's only one way in and one way out. So even with the traffic flow of 7:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the afternoon, when people are getting up and getting ready and prepared to work, there's gonna be daycare traffic on that street, one way in and one way out. And I can see that as a potential problem also. If it were a through street, that might be, might be a little bit different. Another issue too is that is precedence, I mentioned that earlier. If you, if you allow an exception in an R2-zone residential area, that opens the door for someone to come forward at a later time, whether it's on Hammond Street or in another residential area and say, you did it on Hammond Street, we would like to open another business on this, in this particular area at this particular time. And then you would have to justify your decision at that point. So I've been in your seat. It's a hard decision. I've thought about it a lot because I, I don't think there are enough daycare centers, but I just don't think this is the place for a daycare center in this particular neighborhood. It's residential, it's quiet, it is peaceful. The residents there do have an expectation of what's called quiet enjoyment or peaceful enjoyment, and it's zoned that way for a purpose. So anyway, I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, thanks for your time, my name is Josh Wilson, Jasmine's older brother. Not a great public speaker, so I apologize in advance. Beyond being Jasmine's brother, I'm a member of this community, I'm a homeowner. I own a house at Grand Park Road, off one of four. I think someone, anyone trying to embed our community by instilling and taking care of our youth is really important. Jasmine, since I've known her, which is her whole life, has been nothing but a caretaker. She takes care of us, I'm her older brother, she's my mother, you know what I mean? That's her, if you were to meet her children, Elena is probably the most well-behaved child I've ever met in my life. So I'm really, really, really proud of Jasmine, and I'm a little emotional about it, but like, I am just really proud of her for trying to embed her life, and not only that, but something she's done since she was a child, and kind of looking over the younger flock has always been her bag, right? She, she takes care of our family, she takes care of her children, and I really think if you gave her an opportunity to impart that to other members of our community within Robertsdale, those children would be better for it. I really can't understand how it would disturb the neighborhood, I don't live in that neighborhood, so I can't speak to it. But sometimes I think things should be sacrificed for the embodiment of the community, and I fully believe my sister would bring that to anyone who came through her care.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess at this time we'll close the questions for a moment, and if you'll give the board a chance to, to talk about this.
Okay, I'll go first. Nothing against her, she's a wonderful person. But this will set a precedent for the rest of the neighborhoods in Robertsdale, be it a daycare or something else. It's a residential area, and...
I agree, because it's R2.
I just, I just can't approve that because I live in that neighborhood. You know, I would not want a daycare next to me because of the traffic. But that has nothing to do with it anyway, it sets a precedent for the whole, for the hotel, so that's just my opinion.
What do you think?
That's me, perfect.
Yeah. What's your thoughts on?
I'm kinda with them on that, but we have to think about the zoning and what it's already saying, unfortunately.
I mean, not that there's not a need for it, by any means, there is a need for it, but...
Well, my thoughts are, I kinda, I kinda agree with you about the neighborhood type thing, as far as the traffic, I don't think it really would be that big a deal, because what if somebody had six kids already and a house, I mean, they've already got, or three teenagers on the down streets, there still would be traffic, but if we allow it, then it's allowed everywhere.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I hate it, I mean, I really do, but...
But there's a place for all businesses.
Yeah, it just sets a precedent, and then you just open the door wide open to any other thing that wants to come along and open a business.
To open a home-based business like that, yeah.
All right, I'm open, we're gonna take a vote on it, would you call roll, please? Uh, no. Oh, I beg your pardon, we'll make a motion to have the vote on, on this matter right here about opening a daycare, rezoning it.
I make a motion to decline the special exception request.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, would you call roll, please, ma'am? Uh, no.
No.
David Philpries?
No.
Mary Loveham?
No.
Mary Booth?
No.
Miranda Baldwin?
No.
All right, the motion is being carried, and unfortunately, ma'am, we're not gonna be able to do that. Anyone here representing our next thing is, anyone, Mr. Robert Cox? Is anybody here for that? Okay, if you don't mind coming up and explaining to us what, the things you would like to properly do for us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and city staff, so glad to be here, my name's Melissa Hadley, and I'm with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood Architecture and Engineering, located out of Daphne, Alabama. I'm here on behalf of Robert Cox, who was the applicant, and East Bay Worship Center. I do have some handouts that I'd like to give to the board members, if you don't mind if I approach. So you may be familiar with this site already, it has received site plan approval, and it's been under construction for several months. This was Latienda Specialty Supermarket on Highway 104. The property became available for purchase and/or lease, and East Bay Worship Center is interested in occupying this property. So this requires a change of use from the supermarket to the church, and under the Robertsdale zoning ordinance, a church is, has to be approved under special exception in, I think all but two zoning categories, including the business zone that this is currently in. So the site plan that was approved and has been under construction, so you're probably familiar with the building. It's already built, it's up, the parking lot has, the curb forms are in, but it hasn't been paved. The retention basin has been put in, and so what we have brought here for you to take a look at is how the church would like to use the property. So I have done a little bit different layout on the site plan, you can see, well, we can just start with the first page, so this is a rendering based on an existing photograph of what the building currently looks like and how we would enhance the exterior, including landscape for a church facility. On the next page is a potential sanctuary plan. So this building will function as a sanctuary, so there's not offices in it, there'll be rooms for children's church, rooms for church on Sundays, things like that. But offices and things like that will be located off-site. There is space set out right now for 414 chairs, and then we have women's and men's bathrooms, kids' facilities, and various storage rooms and things like that, welcome centers. A little bit of background on the church, correct me once. Just to give you a little background on the church, so this church began in 2023, and we have Pastor Rob and Julie Cox here, and it began in their living room. And by the end of 2023, they were averaging about 139 adults and 40 children. In 2024, they had grown to 164 adults average and 50 children. And this year, we have, we averaged 217 adults and 68 children. So roughly around 220. On Sunday mornings, I think the church is setting out approximately 300 chairs. And the way that the services function, the children are in the service until the worship time is over, and then they go to children's church. So that's the maximum number of individuals in the main portion of the area, and currently the church is meeting at Robertsdale Elementary. And prior to that, they were at the Robertsdale PZK Hall. So that's a little bit of background on the church, so the church is in search of a place that they can have a more permanent home, and this became available, and it's just a wonderful reuse of a building that could no longer be completed to its intended purpose as the supermarket. And the church is a terrific asset to the community, and we've come up with a really viable way that this building could be repurposed without a lot of, actually no structural changes really to the building, just a reconfiguration, adding some walls to make the sanctuary and the various places for the children in the restrooms. On the next page, I've done a layout of how the parking could be redone. So currently, the site plan that, that was before the city that was approved had 36 parking spaces on it. Wasn't a very efficient layout, and so I've done a different layout, and we have 55 spaces with, which includes three handicap spaces and two handicap aisles. So based on the zoning code for, the, the code requires one space for every four seats. So we would need 104 seats if we had the full 414 spaces. So at 55 spaces, that allows us to have 220 seats, which is pretty much in line with where we're at right now. So we could park right there on the site, but then we also have an agreement with the property owner that owns this site, also owns the Taco Fiesta across the street and the lot that's adjacent to that. And so there's an agreement that they can also park there, so the intent would be for church workers, pastors, to park in the lot across the street, because we're getting there early before service and things like that, and then the parking lot there would be reserved for the attendance. So, and then the final page is just a sort of an enlargement of what the site itself looks like, so you can see sort of the building sitting on the site. We don't really have to alter anything, other than the pavement, which hasn't been put in yet for the parking. So what we're coming before you here is, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, we have to get a special use allowance for this use as a church.
Okay, parking. You have enough for your congregation now.
Right.
Are you gonna grow?
We are, and we're hoping that we can acquire more property, with this just all happened, and so we're in the process of speaking with the adjoining property owners to, whether we can purchase additional parking or have leased parking, like leased the area. I know Pastor Rob Cox, he has already approached the ABC store, which is across the street, and they've had a verbal agreement that we can park there as well. And I haven't had an opportunity to do a layout on that to see how many spaces could be allocated on a Sunday morning, because as, if you're aware of how that is laid out, it's laid out for semi-trucks and to back up into the loading area. So it's way bigger than, than the parking that it's striped for. So that would probably be another 30 spaces. Then we have the vacant lot beside the Taco Fiesta, that could do an additional 42 spaces. So we feel like it's there. But then, obviously, if we're able to acquire more property, that would be the goal. So we've started into those conversations, but we're just in this process right now.
My other concern would be traffic control on Sunday mornings in and out on 104, and people crossing 104.
Right.
From the parking spaces across the street.
We currently have a police officer that the church hires every Sunday. And so we would obviously continue that, and if we needed to hire more, we would do that for crossing, because that's obviously a concern. We've talked about having golf cart, shuttle, or something like that, so safety is a paramount concern.
Yeah, she read my mind, because we're all for the racetrack any time of day.
Yes, yes, and, and we, we have them that we employ on Sunday already.
What would be your normal church hours, and would there be any other days, nights, things like that, and if there were, would you still have the traffic control then too?
We would definitely, if it's warranted, we sure would, maybe on youth night, like the youth of the church currently meet on Tuesday night at the PZK Hall. And so if, I think that's actually a really good idea, we can address that to Pastor Rob.
Thank you for hearing us. Excited to be in the city of Robertsdale, I appreciate your time. So yeah, to shuttle, also, we've talked about shuttling over from Walgreens parking lot. A lot of churches do that now, they shuttle people from a different location. So safety is paramount. Our church is a busy church. We'll kind of receive that property as like it's ours, and we'll have conferences, we'll have many different events. We just did an event called Light the Night at the PZK. We had a great turnout for that, so we're gonna be a church that's in the community and invites the community to come, so Sunday mornings, Tuesday nights, you know, probably Wednesday night, family gathering, we can have Friday and Saturday night conferences there. You know, have different worship nights and prayer. So it'll be our home base, and we would have quite a bit of meetings there, so yeah.
So I think anytime that we have those special events where we have large crowds like that, obviously we'll have police officers there to direct traffic. During the week with the youth services, I think that the onsite parking will be sufficient. If there's music practice or anything like that goes on, the parking onsite should be more than sufficient for things like that. But of course, you know, we'll be back before the city with a new site plan, and have to get site plan approval, and have all of those traffic and parking details worked out. Right now, we just, our first step is just getting approval for the use. And we think it's a terrific use, in the short time that East Bay Worship Center has been in Robertsdale. We've held many events where we've brought food free of charge to the schoolteachers across Baldwin County. We, we had our hometown heroes, where we cooked a dinner for, or it was lunchtime that we served, anybody that serves in any way, utility workers, police officers, first responders, all free of charge, because we are, wanna be a blessing to our community. I should say, I, I am representing them in a professional manner here, but I'm also a conundrum.
Well, I'm kinda like this, you know, I, I think it's a beautiful building, and, you know, and I'm all for churches. I just worry about the traffic and the I'm more worried about the traffic being held up on 104 than I am about the traffic in and out of the church. You know what I mean? If you have a policeman directing and stopping traffic, it don't need to be backed up on 104, I mean, that's a very busy, busy highway.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's my biggest concern, is...
Fortunately, Sunday morning is the lightest traffic day, so we wouldn't be impeding any school traffic or anything like that.
Yes.
And we will definitely be working on purchasing additional property, and the, the parking issue is just a temporary thing that will be worked on, and again, like, by the time we get the site plan approval, we'll have that worked out.
I also think that if, if this is approved, that maybe a good thing you could possibly do is, is reach out to the Robertsdale Police Department and speak to them too, just for the fact about traffic flows and things on Sunday mornings, or if you know you're gonna have a big event on Friday or Saturday night, not necessarily the officers... a big event on a Friday or Saturday night, not necessarily the officers there to do it for you, but then they would be aware of it. So they would also possibly help with some of the traffic flow a little bit, just in their natural time of doing their duties.
Yes, sir. And that's something that we have, we've already been doing. Anytime we've had larger events, like when we had the Light the Night, which was just a couple of weeks ago for our fall, Big Fall Festival, and we had several Robertsdale police officers there assisting with traffic and just, you know, around the crowd. And they're always there on Sunday. So we have a really good relationship already with the police department, and we will definitely continue that.
We have a parking team too for big events and security, our own security. So we're accustomed to doing big events, you know, getting people in and out of spots. And so, yeah, we're definitely accustomed to doing that.
Got any more questions? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here that has anything to say on this matter? If you want to come on up, sir?
My name is Raymond Price. I've been in business going on 55 years. We do business all over the world. So I know a little bit about it. I watched that building go up. We helped the ABC store get started, and I think they really did a good job. And I know when they built, they couldn't get water across the street. So they came over and asked us, did they borrow water from us to even put slab down? We said yes. Then we got to talking, and we had these big trees. We have the refrigeration company next door, which is basically a storage. And it's fabrication, and refrigeration goes on boats all over the world, fishing vessels. And I've worked in hospitals, I've worked in plants, I've worked in churches. I think the biggest church that we did was 20,000 square feet. There's a lot more to a church than just going in there. This thing got to be re-engineered. You have to go in there and figure out how many people's gonna be in there, how much the airflow is in the building. The air conditioning that probably designed there now is not sufficient. Always the air conditioning's in the ceiling. Most every job we do, we take it out. We build rooms on the side, you know, for where it can be serviced. When you have a 20-foot ceiling, there's no way other than getting there with a lift. So we try to change all of it. But we, I know the way parking is too. Next door, the ABC store, you need to think about this before you do it. And I mean, I'm not against the church. What they've got a drawing there looks good, as long as it stays like that and they don't violate the laws. But there needs to be studies done on this. When you go across the street, you have parking spaces that already laid out for so many cars. What are you gonna do with that? You know, are you gonna change it? Has that been discussed? A lot of engineering needs to go on. But I think that is a nice-looking sketch. I noticed when we came in, there's this gigantic sign across the street from our business. It is big as our whole front of our building. And I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with the church, but I don't see a sign for advertising for a sign business got to be put up in front of our building over there. All these things are done without studies. So I'm suggesting that a little bit of studies be done before this is approved. The air conditioning's got to be changed, I'm sure, what they have in there. The amount of people they're talking about, I can give you a rule of thumb. It would take a minimum of 30,000, well, 30 tons to do that many people what they're talking about. Is the owner of the building ready to do this? It's a lease from what I get out of it. And another thing is, let's say they decide that it's too small, that they grow, and they want to move out. Can it be rezoned back to what it was? You know, the building? Then you run into the problem again, redoing the engineering on the building again for what it's gonna be used on. But that is a thing now. You might be able to go over there, that's a lot of parking space across the street. But somehow, the spaces in there, that's probably not 20 spaces parked. You have to redo all that. All this has got to be redone. A little bit of thought needs to go in this. You just don't jump into something like that. And anyhow, it does look nice. As long as they do that, they don't go throwing big signs out in the front like they did in front of our business. I think you have to have a business license to put up signs, you know, that are that size, like wall or sign gun. We had a business in Mobile 30 years. We have one in Bio Battery where we do marine refrigeration. We're doing refrigeration in South America. We're doing it up on the east coast, on the west coast, all the way down to New Zealand, to Dutch Harbor, Alaska. Now, this doesn't benefit the city of Robertsdale because we had one guy in Faro that the, every fishing village in the United States ought to put a statue of. He got, he would call me every morning at four o'clock in the morning, let me know something, you know? So he petitioned all the senators. He wouldn't let him go. He got a bill passed where every fishing vessel in the United States pays zero tax. There's no tax on fishing vessels in the building to repair. So we don't pay tax on refrigeration. Goes all over the world. But I have seen a lot of different buildings go up. I think you need to study a little bit, and I think things can be worked out, you know? You can't just condemn somebody because they want to do something. I've talked to people all over. We did almost every hospital in this part of the country because nobody else has worked. We do. We retube chillers, refill chillers in hospitals. All of this. Now, I'm worn out because I'm 85 years old. I've turned everything over to our children, you know, and they're running a business now. I have bad health, so I do know that if you work with people, they'll usually work with you. I talked to a Ms. Kate Wally today. We just got the notice in the mail. It's slow, I think it goes to Chicago or somewhere, and then it comes back. But anyhow, I believe it can be worked out, but I don't think you should make a decision until you work all this out, you know? And I do wish them luck, but these are just a few points that have to be considered, you know? I do thank you for letting me talk. I mean, I've talked this long, but I'm used to doing it because I have to do talking to everybody all over the world. And I've been real fortunate to be able to do what I've done, you know, take all these years. The way I got started, I was going through refrigeration school for two years, and I worked night, all night long. Well, I worked from 3:00 to 11:00. And I met this guy that worked for marine industrial refrigeration. They did every hospital in this part of the country. And I'd go back there and help him at night. He said, "When you get out of school, you come see me." Says, "I'm getting ready to go to work for Carrier Corporation in New York City." He said, "They're looking for a young guy like you to take this company over." You know, so I went over there. I showed up on January the 1st, got out of school with Chris. Three years later, I was running the business. They made me a partner, gave me 33% of the company. So I've been fortunate. My wife ran the operating room in Mobile Infirmary for 25 years. They did a hundred-and-some cases. We've been married 62 years. And I guess, being that she worked hard and I worked hard all my life, that's why we're still married.
Thank you.
But anyhow, I do wish them luck.
I appreciate everything you told us, Mr. Price. It's not to cut you off, but we had to kind of continue. Is there anybody else that has anything else they'd like to say on this matter? We have another gentleman back there, Mr. Price.
Where are my friends? Hey, Raymond? And not against the project, but it is a very good opportunity for the city to have it. But based on our history, what I have seen the last four years that I live in the city, Mr. Price has a very good advice for all of us, especially for the committee, not only for the planning committee, for any committee, including the council. It's a, we're gonna give some examples. For this project, we have 59 and 04, less than two blocks away from the church. See if we're gonna approve. That corner is extremely important, it's a four-way corner. In case we have an emergency, in case we have a backup, they mentioned. So my question is, do we need a traffic study before we approve projects like this? Second, across the street is a very famous business, Taco Fiesta. Sometimes with five or six customers, that parking lot across the street is full. It's a place to park. In that, we have to park next to the 104. So it's not safe in case, imagine it's Sunday, it's a busy day, church. So all these kind of situations must be studied, deal with, before we make a decision like today, you know? Because I imagine the church is gonna grow, and maybe I'm gonna be there, gonna be one part of that because close to where I live, you know? Also, another example I wanna put is, because our city's growing so much, with so many new subdivisions, I've been in most, all of them, have been approved, to my point of view, very fast, without proper study. And now that those subdivisions have been filled up, we have some issues that the city has to take care, to lay for the construction company to take care of those situations. Why? Because unfortunately, for whatever reason, we're not taking care of on time. And those are, some of them, some of those projects are very expensive for the city. But those issues are gonna stay like that for years to come. So Mr. Price, this is something very useful for all of us, including me, is that please state in consideration that when there are a little more, little bit more time and studies in order to keep this, for this kind of project approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, do you have anything about this building?
That was about to be my next question. Yeah. Yeah, so I'm Mark Fincher, I'm the build official for the city of Gulf Shores. There are some...
Robertsdale.
Oh, did I say Gulf Shores?
Yes, you did. You ain't been there in hell, though.
There went my raise. I'm gonna kiss that goodbye.
Don't forget to make...
Robertsdale, I don't know why.
Creature head.
Been so long down there. But anyway, I'm much happier here at Robertsdale.
Yay!
Glad this is on YouTube. Yeah, so we do have some concerns. So anytime a church is, or a house of worship is constructed in the city, we require the parking to be all encompassed in that lot on that, for that certain church or house of worship. They do have, you know, they're talking about planning, parking on some other lots. Since this is being purposely built, the city requires all the parking to be on that lot or to be owned by that church. If that, if they own the next lot, that would be a different situation. She does have a very nice layout here. I do, I'm not really sure if that parking is gonna equal that many spaces with what we have in there. We have, our parking's a little bit bigger than most people's are, 20, 20-foot, and it's nine-foot wide instead of eight-foot wide. They did design that...
Ten, isn't it?
Nine, nine, yep.
It's been changed.
But, so, so anyway, there'd be a little concern on the parking right there, not being, not belonging to that, to that piece of property right there. You know, that's what we would require normally. And just for instance, you know, agreeing, you know, somebody giving, letting them park there.
They could change that agreement.
That could sell tomorrow, then we're out of those parking spots. There's several other developments that's gonna happen soon that's on the books for that place. They just hadn't came in for permitting yet. There's gonna be a service road that leads down to the building, the office building that they're building to the east. So that entrance, that turnout right there at this property right here is the turnout for that whole piece of property, the old livestock property. So that's a single turnout for the other, the other lots there. So, and we do have some questions. This is gonna cause it to be sprinkled, they're gonna have to put a fire suppression system in it. But our biggest concern is the parking. There's just not, there's just not enough parking spaces there.
And so, and based on the way the whole thing's set up, there's no way to add any more parking per se?
She's got it, I mean, they had it a little big in there so they could get a ten-wheel truck in there to deliver groceries and all, and be able to turn around and back in there. So there is a little bit, there is some adjustment, but it's, you know, we wouldn't know that unless we had a real, a real good site layout with dimensions and...
But other than just that one spot, there's nowhere else for them to add parking, just because the way the whole's...
Not unless they own, they own the lot next door.
And the building itself, what kind of, what will it, what it needs? The sprinkler system?
Yeah, well, it needs a fire suppression system, sprinkler system, and it needed complete engineer and architect redesign. Right now, there's just, there's just a small bathroom. It was designed for a grocery store. I think occupancy load was like 140 on the original building. So that's why there's only 36 parking spots that they accommodated, just what their occupancy load was gonna be for that type of structure or that type of occupancy. Yeah, there would be, there'd be a lot of work involved, which it can be done, but we're, that's yet to see how, how the plumbing's gonna lay out. And this layout, they've got a lot of bathrooms, they have a lot of toilets, a lot of water closets, urinals, and hand sinks, which are gonna, it's gonna, from what I see, is gonna change it quite a bit. That's not a problem, you know, as long as they can cut up the concrete and get the, get the drainage in where they need it. That's, you know, as far as the AC work, that has to be redesigned for whatever, for their new layout, you know? Just about this, we don't really know if it's open ceiling, it's gonna be a drop ceiling in there, hard ceiling. We really don't know, you know, until we get the details on that. But the biggest issue is the parking, and then it will have to have a fire suppression system in it.
I have a question, Mark. What's the occupancy of this building?
As they have it designed?
Or as it says now?
Any, any, any design?
It depends on what it's gonna be. Depends on what occupancy type it's gonna be.
Four hundred?
It's, it's-
People in ten thousand square feet?
The occupancy on a, um, house of worship is based on the fixed seat. Right? The fixed seat and then the accessory areas. You gotta, you basically got a hundred, uh, four hundred and fourteen? And it's, it's the design load. However, they bring it to us with the design is what is gonna tell us how many parking spots we need. So the house of worship is based on, like I said, the fixed seating that it's gonna have, and then the accessory area.
It costs like sixty thousand dollars to run the water to that building.
Yeah, so they, for the fire suppression system, there is a hydrant there, there, they can tap off onto that. They will have to give, first of all, they'll find out, they'll need to know if they can even, we have a water flow or sprinkler system for that size. I imagine possibly it'd be right on the edge, I don't know what the flows are over there. Um, that's a six-inch that would be going to that building, or I think that's a six-inch, we'll have to double check. That's a lot of things that we'll have to find out, but there is water on that side road.
So does all this need to be done before we say yes or no, or any kind of?
Well, basically, you know, we can, if you, if you give them the variance, or grant them the special exception, you know, that's one thing, but it's, it's all base, basically, our biggest problem is gonna be the parking. Is they don't have enough parking on their property for, at this location, for their amount of fixed seat, for their occupancy load.
See, that was my thought.
Yeah, that's the thing. But I hate to say anything bad about church, so I or, oh, Robertsdale for that matter.
We'll forgive you, Mark. We'll forgive you.
Yeah, uh, any other questions?
I have one. If, um, it says here that they're gonna have fifty-five spaces on site, how many people are allowed with fifty-five spaces?
Two hundred and twenty seats.
Two hundred and twenty seats? I thought I wrote it down, but I wasn't sure.
Four, four per car, whatever.
Four per space.
So that would be their maximum occupancy as is right now on?
Right. Without using it anywhere else, you know? And they basically already have that filled up without even growing it all?
Yep. Yeah, and I think the, the developers, they're aware of all the redesign that it's gonna take. Cause the building is, the building's complete inside for what they need, but minus furnishings.
Sure.
But it's pretty much complete on the inside.
But it's got to be redone to do this?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a full redesign on the inside, which is possible. It's a pretty much blank shell, it's just got some stuff in it. The whole front of it's empty. Um, it's just got a little, uh, daily area in the back, and restaurants, and a storage area.
Okay.
So I can talk a little bit about some of the engineering issues. So obviously, the plans have to be redone. The architectural plans will be redone, all of the HVAC will be reassessed. We are aware that we will need a sprinkler system. You know, it, it's not like we could move in tomorrow. But I do wanna remind what we're doing here tonight, and that's just to approve use. There are so many details that have to be worked out, a lot of engineering, architectural changes. But, um, as you know, in business, um, there's a opportunity that they could have this building, and there's what they'd like to do, they have a letter of intent for an eight-year lease, um, and then that could be finished out to their use, but we can't really move forward with a contract, um, unless we know that we can get an approved use. So it's gonna be a while before the church will be ready to occupy it, and in the meantime, we've already started trying to either acquire additional property or lease additional property for parking. We, we know that, we know that that's necessary. And that again, is something that if we can't get that, then we can't move forward with the deal either. But those details really aren't for you to have to worry about right now. What we have to do is get an approval for the use. So according to the zoning code, all the three zoning districts require a permission from the board of zoning approval, or vote of, board of zoning, um, adjustments. So this isn't a rezoning, this is, um, any church that wants to come to the city of Robertsdale will be coming before you to get permission to be a use as a church. So this isn't anything that will be new, or it's not special, or it's because we're doing anything different. Um, it's just a requirement in the zoning ordinance. It's not an unusual use. Uh, the gentleman spoke really nicely about how the city's growing, which is wonderful. Those people need somewhere to go to church, and we would like to have them right here in our community. Um, East Bay Worship Center is very dedicated to the city of Robertsdale, and they've already demonstrated that over the last three years. Pastor Rob Cox comes from a pastoral family. His father is one of the associate pastors. He was a pastor at a very large church here in Baldwin County, who's been here for a while. And, you know, every healthy organism grows, and that's a great sign. Robertsdale's growing, our county, our county's thriving, new families are coming, families are having children. And, um, a church is a really important part of a community, just as important as our schools, as our churches. You know, we have, we have to train up our children in the way that they should go, so that they are, um, responsible citizens. And East Bay Worship Center wants to be a part of that. We wanna be a part of a good, healthy, beautiful vision for the city of Robertsdale. So just as a reminder, uh, there's so many details to work out, and we can't, we don't wanna move forward with a church if we don't have adequate parking. So that won't happen. The architecture has to be, the architectural plans will have to be redesigned for the HVAC, for the plumbing, for all those things, the engineering. Um, there's definitely a way, maybe we won't have that many toilets. So we're just, the floor plan is conceptual, and obviously, you always ask, well, how many seats could we put in there? So that's the maximum, we won't ever really get any more than that. There'll probably be less, cause I haven't laid out an area for the media booth, um, and things like that, so, and like I said, we have three hundred chairs. The church is committed to being good stewards of the resources that they have, so we're, the, getting a lease on this property is a big, that's a big financial obligation. So we're gonna use the equipment, the chairs, the things that we have. But we can't move forward in a contract, um, with, with Jesus and those that own the property, um, unless we know that we can have the use approved. And so right now, um, we don't have to solve the traffic, we don't have to solve the HVAC, we just have to solve the use. It's a great use, it's a use that'll benefit the community. And if we can't make those other things work, then we don't have a successful site plan application, and there's been no harm to you approving a use that, oh, even if it didn't come to pass. We hope it will, we have a wonderful vision for our community, um, but we just have to have a use approval tonight.
I just wanna interject with the HVAC units, cause we've already done a lot of the pre-work before, some of your guys' questions. Each one of them is fifty tons, and we have two of them, so the HVAC is capable to handle what we're-
They're giants, yeah, for a grocery store with freezer sections and all of those things. And to heat and cool an entire space that large, it's ten thousand square feet. So the chiller and, you know, it's brand new, um, but obviously, we have to have venting and stuff like that, cause it's a totally different use. Have to build those walls and put those things in, and if there's not ample fire flow, then we can't do the project either. So all of those things have yet to be worked out. Obviously, we know that, that we have those things, and that's what engineering companies are for, that's what we do. And we will work out those details, and if it doesn't work on the site, then we'll find another one, but the church wants to be in Robertsdale. We wanna be here, we wanna be here to, um, train up our children, we wanna be here to serve our community, to continue pouring into our police officers, our schoolteachers, like we've already been doing. That, that's our heart.
And I, it's a beautiful building, but I have an issue with the parking. I, I just don't think, like Mark said, the code requires parking there, not across the street, or not next, and someone could, like, next door, say, no, you can't park here anymore, I'm having issues with people littering on my property or something. And that's, that's my biggest drawback, is the parking situation.
Right, but again, those things will be resolved at site plan application.
But you can't make the parking lot any bigger.
Yeah, how would they be resolved in a site, I'm sorry, I mean-
If we don't have, like, we, we can't move forward with a site plan approval if we don't have those issues worked out. But we, we have had some-
Uh, my name's Gan Wilkinson, I'm the listing agent, and I represent the owner of the property, Jesus. Um, I just wanted to say, there was a couple miscues that some people brought up. He actually owns a lot across the street. He doesn't just use it, and we haven't just gotten permission from the-
Right.
Parked place. He owns a lot, uh, to which let's explain, he can fit about forty to thirty, thirty or forty spots. The other thing I wanted to mention about parking is, um, the adjacent property owner, Ian Morrison, who I guess could not make it tonight. We do have a verbal agreement with him to lease half of his property, which is a little bit bigger than the property that the owner owns across the street. So hypothetically, he could fit more spots there.
But is that, is that property next to the building, or is that property?
It is directly adjacent, yeah, it's, it's, I don't have a partial number in front of me, but it's that one there.
Okay.
And, but there again, he could cancel that agreement at any time he so chooses.
Well, we don't have an agreement yet, that's the whole point of us being able to, to have the use approved, to have these continued conversations. Um, we, we put, we put that out there, but, you know, it's there. And, and we, we do believe it could have the adequate amount of parking if we were to use the back cap of what you have proposed. And it would be a ground lease, and the church would be able to develop it at their own expense into a parking lot. And that, that was the verbal agreement that we talked about, so.
Mark, would that-
Satisfy the parking?
Satisfy the parking issue?
It's a separate lot.
They want it to be, our requirement as the city is that it all be on the same one-lot property, essentially?
I would have to look at it, I'm, I'm build official.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Our guy who does, that did our planning and zoning, has, uh, resigned, so, yeah. So that's where, that's kinda where we're at with that. Would have to look into it if you guys wanna, you know, table or whatever, but, uh, so we can get a good, a-
And my, and my problem is to-
Correct answer on that, but yeah, those are separate lots.
Okay.
But if they leased the property, they would be leasing ownership of the property, so technically, it's an adjacent lot.
But are you gonna get a written contract?
We can, but, but shutting, I think shutting it down right now won't help us at all. You guys just wanna do what's right, I understand your concerns about traffic, but-
Trap, traffic flow right there, you know, you're R two blocks from fifty-nine, and if you have a guy comes out, he starts stopping traffic, you're gonna back traffic up onto fifty-nine. And-
So we have, like, if you think about City Hope, um, Church of His Presence, those are two really big churches on Highway one eighty-one, which has even more traffic, especially City Hope, and it's not really been that big of an issue.
Yeah, but one eighty-one's also a four-lane highway, and we're also talking about a different municipality.
Yes, sir, I, I'm just saying that it, I don't think it'll be as bad of a problem. I mean, it's, traffic is an issue for sure, and we, we'll do everything that we can to keep the traffic moving safely.
So, um, I don't know if you guys know, did you guys know we had church at the PZK for over a year? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, that's four blocks from my house.
Yeah, it's not too far down the way. And First Baptist has church on one oh-four every Sunday, love them, love that pastor. And then, do they, do you know if they have sprinklers? First Baptist?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have the same access to the same water, potentially?
Yes, you have water access, you have the water there.
Okay, so we-
Now we'll have, you, your fire flow designer would have to give us-
Yeah, we, we have-
They would ask for the flow, whatever the, whatever would require, whatever that sprinkler system would require the flow, they would verify with our water department if they have the necessary flow. If, I don't know what that, what that's gonna be.
Yeah, we, we have a bid already for, uh, sprinklers. I think the confusion, and I'm gonna do my best, is that we can't do anything that you want us to do if you say no right now. And if you say no right now, it's over, and that building's gonna sit empty. So what we're saying is, you have to, I was, I thought this was like a first step meeting, and then I was gonna have to put in an application and go to the planning commission, there's like another step. I thought this was just a, yeah, let's see if it, you can get the usage, and then we'll put everything together and present that to you, and then it's a yay or a nay. But if it's a no right now, then we can't do any of that, and every, and kinda the deal is kinda over. So that's my heart, and when they say I wanna be in Robertsdale, that is the truth. I've been offered places in Foley and other places to go, and Baymanet, I wanna be in Robertsdale. We meet in the elementary school. We're all about, when they were talking about hometown heroes, we fed fifteen hundred teachers in Baldwin County, and went to the elementary school, I went to elementary school today and walked around giving gift cards to a lot of teachers and people. We wanna be in Robertsdale. So I've been trying to be in Robertsdale since we started the church. I guess the question is, and, you know, you can answer me, is would you like us to be in Robertsdale? I've been looking for buildings and places and things, and trying to, you know, do things in Robertsdale. That would be a question I'd pose, would you like East Bay Worship Center in Robertsdale, Alabama?
See, nobody's saying that, though, the problem is, we're talking about the site that you want to be in Robertsdale. There's certain laws and regulations that we have to go by in order to approve that.
I understand, well, completely, all of that. I understand everything. So we, we definitely wanna be underneath everything you guys want us to do, that's definitely what we're doing. So, but I'm trying to understand, I thought this meeting was gonna be like a, hey, yeah, you could, you could use it for this, but you gotta get all these things in line. Is that not what this meeting is about?
Is there, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we give them the special exception to give them the opportunity to move forward and get the information that they need to be able to get.
Because they have to have the use approved.
Because they have to have those, they have to have that done before they can go any further.
They're not gonna be able to move forward.
Correct.
And they won't be able to get approval for a building if they don't meet site inspection approval.
Correct.
So.
There's a lot of steps that we have to, that are gonna make sure that all of the buildings are in the right order. There's a lot of other businesses, this is a B-two zone, that could be way more intense than ours.
Correct.
That every business is gonna generate traffic. Business is great, though, you know, business is good for Robertsdale, whether it's, uh, whatever it is. So this building will either be empty, or another business will come in. It's a big building, it's gonna be some kind of big business.
And if they can't get it approved, then the special exception dies.
Exactly.
Right.
Essentially.
So there's really no, unless you have an objection to a church being in the spot.
That has nothing to do with the-
At this particular spot.
I mean, I don't have an exception, uh, objection to a church being there, I just, it has to have adequate parking as is, and it does not.
And we don't want, we don't want to not have adequate parking, believe me.
Well, I understand that, but you do, that's the problem.
No, we want, we will definitely have that worked out.
We're gonna make conditions of approval.
We can.
Do you wanna stipulate, like, where the parking has to be, like, it can't be across the street, it needs to be leased right there next to-
It doesn't have anything to do with the use.
That'll, that'll go with all the engineering requirements anyway.
So basically, the motion we're giving them, it's okay for them to study to see if it's feasible to put the church there.
Right.
And there'll be tou, traffic studies will-
And be on conditions- Go ahead.
Prolong the whole, as, as it sits right now, there's not enough parking spots for the occupancy load on that piece of property.
Right, so even if we-
So it wouldn't be compliant with the land use ordinance.
Well, we can limit, we could limit the chairs that we put out to two hundred and twenty, and we can certainly do that. Um, art, we have three hundred chairs and they're not full.
Man, once again, has nothing to do with the chairs, you could put three hundred chairs out, you could have six hundred people show up for the service.
Well, the way that the ordinance reads, it's one space for every four seats.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm not being facetious to you, I'm saying, I mean, that sounds wonderful, but, and I would hope you would have six hundred people show up for the service, but at the same time, is that site big enough to have that many people come regardless of how many chairs you have out?
I, I would say that's like a if.
Yeah.
I don't, I think, I don't think that's, you know, that's like what if.
But once again, we're setting a precedent, and we have to be careful setting a precedent.
I don't think there's a precedent being set, I think it's a, hey, yeah, let's look into this, you know? Cause we don't wanna be there if we can't have everything we need to be with. You know, and we have had a service or two where a lot of people showed up, and we actually said, sent people away at the PZK and gave everybody that- said, sent people away at the PZK, and gave everybody that we had to send away a gift card. So that's actually something we have done before. I hate doing that, but I'll just say one more thing, and then I'll get out your hair, but it's really hard to find buildings and places and, very, very difficult. Very difficult, and it's, it can be discouraging.
We're granting a use, we're not granting the site approval.
Right.
You're going to have to go out, they're going to have to do engineering, they're going to have to restructure, they're going to have to meet the building codes, and all that would have to be met before they can get site plan approval to move in. They need our use approval.
Parking and all that, yeah.
Correct. And all, and those things, it's going to take several months to do, and we will have something in place. If we can't secure it, then we might have to look for another site, but this is the first step, is approving the use. And like I said, any church that's in Robertsdale, pretty much is going to have to come for you and get the permission for a use.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded to grant the use. Would you call roll, please, ma'am?
Wait, on the, wait, read, read me the, tell me the motion again, how is it worded?
Basically, the...
Go ahead, Kate. Basically, I, I just made the motion to grant the special use so that they could move forward with the investigation, essentially.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
It, it's not, I mean, it, it's not, that's the only way that they can move forward to find out if they can... Not contingent on if they can get more parking next door. No, because all that has to be met anyway, because that's already in...
In the bylaws or...
In our city stuff.
City order, city.
A different department will handle that.
Right.
I think, I don't know.
So, basically, what he's telling us, regardless of what they do...
Just what we're looking at, at the numbers they have, it doesn't, it's not...
Right.
But that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for the...
The piece of property.
They're asking for use as a worship center, and that's what they're here for, and all those other details will be ironed out in their...
Later in the process.
So basically, what they're, so basically, what they're asking for, true, is, can, can they look to see if they can turn this into a church? Will it work?
Correct.
And then it will be up to the city ordinance.
So they're not going to waste any other time or money, if we say no, they're done.
Right.
If we say yes, then they're going to invest some time and money, and then they're going to make it happen.
Including...
Or not.
Yes.
And if they can't make the parking and the other things happen, then it's a moot point.
Right.
Correct.
All right.
So, yes, that's my motion.
So do we want to vote?
Thank you.
David gave the second, okay.
David second, you call roll, please, ma'am. I beg your pardon, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody else have anything else on this? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Crouch?
Yes.
Liam Russell?
No.
David Pilkerz?
Yes.
Mary Love?
Yes.
Mary Booth?
Yes.
Miranda Ballrich?
Yes.
All right, so the mo, so the motion to find out if this works was approved.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate all your patience, but we, we have, we have one more.
Oh.
We do, is Ms., Ms. Tiffany here with us tonight? Ms. Tiffany is, is looking at possibly opening up a small bakery inside her home.
Hi, my name's Sydney Dudley. I guess I'm a little bit backwards in this, because I have already started my bakery, but I started it as a hobby, and then I just loved it so much, and then at some point, it turned into a for-profit, you know, adventure. So that was only recently. So I live on two two seven one zero Adams Drive, which is, if you're headed toward the Beach Express on Wilters, Adams is going to be like, you go down the dip, you know, you go and start going up, it's right there past the elementary school. I do custom sugar cookies and cakes, and everything is to order, so whatever the customer wants is what I provide. Sometimes people pick up for me, sometimes I might deliver to them, it really just depends on a certain circumstance. So, I don't have any signage in my yard, I'm really not trying to promote, it's just something that I do for profit, and then as soon as I was wanting to do the Honeybee Festival, I was like, you know, I probably need a business license for the city profit still. So then I went through the application, and then Kate told me that I needed a special exemption, and I was like, this is a whole thing? I didn't realize. So, here I am, not realizing what I got myself into. So, yeah, I've been doing this for, my daughter's birthday was August, well, their thing that I've started doing things for was August of last year, and then I just kind of did, like, family things for a while, and then starting this year, I did a few more things, and so it's kind of ramped up a bit, but twenty twenty-six, I'm going to be ramping back down because sanity. And, yeah, so, we have a very long driveway, people just pull in the driveway, they come in the house, I give them the cake or the cookies, you know, whatever it is, or if I have to deliver to them, it's really not like anything more than what I would normally do when I go to Sam's, I just pick up stuff for the business, it's not like a whole extra trip. When I do shopping for my house, I do shopping for my business. I guess y'all are very concerned about traffic, so this is why I'm mentioning these things. Amazon delivers on our road every single day, I see FedEx, I see U.S., I see Amazon multiple times a day, so I know that I'm not interfered in that, to the traffic there. I'm trying to think of anything else. And doing things that I love.
Would you have, like, an operating hours or something like that, or people just might come get their stuff at six o'clock at night, or eight o'clock in the morning? It's kind of just, you say it's custom-made order, so you might go two or three days and have nobody come.
Oh, I haven't had anybody in weeks. Like, I, yeah, I, the last order that I delivered, I drove two roads over and just delivered things. Or, no, my last order was at Sweet Home Coffee, I delivered it to Sweet Home Coffee, and then, you know, on Sunday, and, and that was it, and that was probably two weeks ago. So, I like work, work, work on different things or whatever, and I just like, set my schedule however I want to, because I can. It's based around my kid's school, and, you know, what I want to do for the day and everything, so it, it just, I don't really have, like, hours of operation. If somebody has a birthday party that's on Saturday, and I'm getting their cake, they might pick it up Friday night, I usually stay like by seven, and then in the morning, if they were going to pick it up, if like they have a two o'clock birthday, then they'll probably come and get it by twelve, or, you know, whatever, but it's not like, I don't have five people coming to visit me on the weekend, like, I am not that busy, I promise.
So do you advertise?
Um, I was, like, anytime there was like a, somebody was looking for a cake or whatever, people would always just like put my name out there, and I got where like I am just not putting my name out there anymore.
So it's more like word of mouth?
Yes, that's really where I want to be.
And you just want to have the permission for somebody to come pick a cake up or some cookies, so you don't get in trouble?
Basically. Yeah, this is what I have to do to get a business license, so, I'm here.
I make a motion we approve her to get a business license.
All right, we have, we have a motion to approve that she's able to do the business out of her home, and we have a second.
We don't have anybody else speak?
Oh, I beg your pardon?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have anybody else there? Okay, you go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, I ran down there today.
Now, how long have you been doing this before you moved to Washington?
The question was, how long have I been doing this since I've been in...
Before you moved to Washington?
I haven't, I just started, yeah. August of last year, I did my kids' birthday party stuff, and I made everybody, like, all the kids, like, custom sugar cookies with their names on it or whatever, and then people were like, Sydney, you've missed your calling. I'm like, really? Are you sure? And so then I just decided to do it, and I didn't even have my first order like until maybe November, and then, so really, I've been doing this for exactly a year. And I think we moved on Adams, October, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Now, does she have to have a built-in health department? She does this at home?
I don't know.
Do you like me to answer that?
Yep.
Um, so, my labels have to be approved by the health department, but I am cottage food, so I can't sell anything that doesn't have, like, like, if it has to be refrigerated, then I can't sell it. So cheesecake, pies, things like that where, like, you have to stick it in the fridge, custard, that type of stuff, I cannot sell. But cakes and cookies that have a shelf life, just like, put it on your counter and you're fine, like, yes, maximum freshness, put it in the fridge, put it in the freezer till whenever you need it, sure, but like, it's fine on the counter, that's the kind of stuff that I can sell. So I don't have to go through the health department for things like where they have to come in and inspect my house or anything like that. I'm not regulated in that way, so, in that sense, like, I'm not for everybody, because people might want to go to the publics where they know, you know, they have a ninety-eight health store or whatever, you know, and that's completely about the issue for that.
So this is more a hobby that's turned into...
But you know what? I am covering my costs, and I'm paying myself, and I'm getting myself profit percentage.
Okay.
And now you can, you get the business license, you can go to the little festivals and the fairs.
Correct, which I do not want to do anymore. I did Honeybee, and I was like, this is my mom, I don't know how people do this. So, yeah, I know, I'm, I'm here, but like, I'm, I just feel like, legally, I'm here.
Yeah, sure.
So I have a question. What's difference than this being home-based in a residential area than versus the daycare that we just declined?
I say the traffic.
Well, the daycare has specific hours, there also will be other type things going, and the traffic flow will be completely different than what she does, because she's basically running a little bakery-type thing out of her house, but she's not running people coming and eating lunch, or people being there all day, or people coming and going six days a week, and things like that.
Yeah, I like it.
So granting the variance to her for this, it's not going to open the door for somebody else to come in and do something else that not add a little more traffic?
No, I think it's a different animal.
Mark? Hi, my name is Mark Fincher. I work for Robertsdale, Alabama. Okay, so, home occupa, ho, home occupations are allowed, they're limited to twenty-five percent of the dwelling, no signage, and that's, that's pretty much it, there's a few little things, a little extra things on there, but you can't take up any of the yard, like, couldn't have, like, a woodworking shop out, outside, anything like that, or paint, so, like, a home bakery, that would be, that'd be in compliance with land use ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
I'll second. Yeah, second.
Yeah. I made the first motion.
We have a motion on the table to take a vote on it.
Brian Crouch?
Yes.
Liam Russell?
Yes.
David Pilkerz?
Yes.
Mary Love?
Yes.
Mary Booth?
Yes.
Miranda Ballrich?
Yes.
All right, you're approved, ma'am. All right, y'all, do we have any, any other business that anybody knows about? All right, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay.
You are taking the place of John, correct?
Not that I got asked to tonight.
So, we're not going to have a election till...
January.
January, okay, I just checked.
No, we have to be, you know, the mayor's got to prove us. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.